Let me call this meeting to order. It's the regular scheduled board meeting for August. It is August 11th, 2015. It is now 6:30. Item, section one, call this meeting to order. Determination, we have a quorum. Dr. Norberto Cantú.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramirez.
Present.
Ms. Judy Solis.
Present.
Mr. Benito Sainz.
Present.
Mr. Ruben Klein.
Present.
And myself, Daniel Garcia, are present. And we do have a quorum. The pledge of allegiance. Mr. Sainz. Section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of July 28th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public forum. And before we continue on the agenda, we do have a presentation. We can have Mr. Coach Pat Sainz and our summer track kids come to the front. And I believe also Ms. Nora Rivera and... No? No? Okay. Mr. Sainz, there is a mic right in front of you. You can use the mic.
First of all, I want to thank God for having a good season. Thank you guys for giving it opportunity to work out. As you know, a lot of the times in summer, they're 110, 115 weather. And we're there morning and afternoon. And if anybody knows how they work, the kids, we work them just as hard. If not, they work harder than the high school kids. So, for the first time in a running event, me as a coach, that I had the privilege to be part of a champion and also a record breaker. And to us, it's a great accomplishment. In the past, we've had a couple of kids win state at the shot in discus and in the long jump. But we hadn't had it as I was coaching in the running events. And it gives us a privilege and a great honor to present to these boys and girls that worked out the whole summer, the coaching staff and everybody else. What I'll do, I'll present each one of them, call their names out, so that they can be recognized and you can know who they are and the ages that they're running. These ages are from eight years old all the way to 18 years old. First, I'll start with the small ones, which are called the Pee Wee Division, eight and under. Aileen Garza. She qualified in the 400 and the 800. And she got fourth at state in the 800 over all the state... That's the whole state of Texas, guys. Ezequiel Lopez, 800 and four by one. Gravier Lopez, 800 and four by one. Jonathan Ramirez, 400, 800, and four by one. Ivan Uresti, four by one. All these four, including the young lady, all of them go to Dr. Ramirez Elementary. The Phantom Division is from 10 and under, which is nine and 10. Consists Alondra Oribe, 400 and 800, and mile relay. Lynn Fuentes, mile run, 800, and mile relay. Isabella Gonzalez, mile relay, 800. Melanie Ramirez, mile relay. The mile relay placed ninth at state overall. The Boys 10 and Under. Jason Vega, 200, 800, and mile run. Alexis Acevedo, 800 and mile run. Jose Morales, 800, 400, and 200. I'll leave that to the end, what I want to say about him. Midget Division, 12 and under, which is 11 and 12. Melanie Lopez, 400, mile relay. Sara Carolina Cantú, mile run and mile relay. Dana Velazquez, mile relay. Rosalinda Lopez, mile relay. Three out of the four went to Magnet and Dr. Ramirez. Midget Division, Porfirio Oribe, 400. Serena Ramirez shot put, third place. Porfirio goes to West Grammar and Serena goes to Dr. Ramirez. Junior Division, Carlos Lopez, mile relay. Eric Garza, mile relay, two mile run. Ricky Falcone, mile relay, high jump. José Huerta, mile relay. Oscar Cruz, 800, mile relay. Dariel Ochoa, long jump and triple jump. Now we go into the intermediate division. That's the 15 and 16, the ones that what I just called you were the 13 and 14. Idani Garza, 100 meter hurdles. Some of the high school kids are not here because they're practicing either volleyball or they're practicing football. Sabrina Garza, long jump and high jump. Elias Cobos, long jump. And on the senior division, Alejandro Espinoza, 100 meter hurdles. Now, for the medalist at state, as you guys can see, everybody mostly has medals. A lot of them are from regional, but they're hard to come around. They don't give the medals out there. You have to really earn the ones at state, especially nowadays. It's so competitive nowadays. Serena, this is her second year in a row that she's medaled. Please step up. On the shot put, she placed third place. Dylan McGuffin, this is the third time that he's placed, he placed third place in the shot put. He's probably practicing football if he's not here. Give him a round of applause. And now for the one that made history here for Rio Grande City. And what I mean is when he ran the 400 meter dash, he beat them by 20 something yards, second place. I mean, the whole field was way behind, 20 to 30 yards behind. And you can ask him the year before, that's the way they had left him before. So, that little sour taste gave him an edge to come back and work hard this year. He won the 400 meters and broke the record. And then he also ran the 800 meter against a world record holder. And they came out practically tied. And just on the lean, he was beat. His name is Jose Morales. He goes to school at West Grammar, Roque Guerra. The coaches that helped me out, and I'm very pleased to announce, Mr. Ricardo Ataif, George Olivares, and Yanira Magaña. Thank you, once again, from my part and our coaches and the kids. Believe me, the hard work does pay off, like that's what we try to teach them. And now they've learned. The next two years, we had, the reason we had been working extra hard, because the next two years, the state meet will be in McAllen. So, a lot of our people from Rio Grande, as our team gets better and better and able to compete at that high level, our fans are able to go see our kids. Thank you once again.
Mr. Sainz, thank you and congratulate you. And your coaching staff, the kids as well. It's amazing what you did during the summer. You know, I remember my summers just consisted of playing video games and sleeping late. And it's amazing that your work ethic and dedication to the sport and yourselves. And the parents, again, also, you know, you deserve an applause as well. Parents can please stand to be recognized.
The parents of the children who are presented today, if you could stand so we can recognize
And before you leave, if we could take a picture with the student athletes and the coaches. Let's stand. Stand, I'll be right. Perfect.
Mr. Klein, was me named, I forgot. Mr. Klein came with a tag.
Ms. Rivera, the cheerleaders are here too?
Yes. I know before I was a few, we called the cheerleaders.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, awesome. Okay, thank you.
Great recognition.
For the record, Mr. Noe Deke Gonzales is now present. Item one, consider and take possible action on childcare service vendor agreements for licensed facilities for the 2015-2016 school year.
Mr. Garcia, board president, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, superintendent, ladies and gentlemen of the audience and colleagues. This was presented at the last board meeting, Mr. Garcia, and it was tabled on our request. We have reviewed the literature and gone over the specifics, and we recommend that it be approved.
Mr. President, if I may also, I believe items one through six were all discussed at Contracted Services Committee. I believe Vili Magarza and Cynthia Bassan were present, and all the questions we had were answered. So, I think we covered our grounds there. So, I would move that item one be approved as presented.
Do we have a second on item one?
I would second that.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between TMC Head Start, Early Head Start Program, and Rio Grande City CISD for the school for the 2015-2016
The purpose of this agreement is to enter into a memorandum of agreement to institute a working procedure between the appropriate local educational agency and the TMC Head Start and Early Head Start Program for the provision of providing services to the children between three and five years of age. This was presented before. Administration recommends approval.
Any discussion? Do we have a motion and item two?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on memorandum of agreement between TMC migrant seasonal Head Start and Rio Grande City CISD for the 2015-2016 school year.
This is a cooperative agreement, again, designed to provide service to the children transitioning into a pre-kindergarten program with known for suspected disabilities who reside within the boundaries of Rio Grande City CISD in a joint effort with the TMC migrant seasonal Head Start Program. We recommend approval, sir.
Do we have a motion and item three?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on agreement between the Immaculate Conception School and Rio Grande City CISD to provide free food services for the 2015-2016 school year.
There's a agreement between Rio Grande City CISD and Immaculate Conception School to provide free food service for the provisions of meals. As outlined in the agreement, the Rio Grande City CISD Child Nutrition Program claims all programmed meals for reimbursement, and we recommend approval.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on serving children and adolescents in need agreement for the 2015-2016 school year.
The purpose of the agreement with SCAN, a nonprofit corporation, is to serve the needs of the at-risk children and youth using drugs or alcohol, and has a coalition to address county-wide substance abuse prevention. Programs provided by SCAN Incorporated are worthwhile and vital services for the students of Rio Grande City CISD. As compensation for services, the Rio Grande City CISD will provide SCAN with the office space and the utilities. This is an in-kind value estimate, about $18,000 a year. They service, I would just like to add that they service all the way from La Gruia all the way to Roma, and they have a good program. I was lucky today to talk to Sandra Garza, she's a rep, and she'll be down soon to visit with me. We have additional information at the office, and we recommend at this time that you approve the program.
Do we have a motion on item five?
I move that we approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, discuss, no, item six, discuss, consider and take possible action on renewal of property casualty insurance and workers' compensation for the 2015-2016 school year.
Attached are the renewal proposals for the 15-16 property casualty and workman compensation insurance renewal with Shepper Walton and King Insurance Group. We went over in committee, went very well, and we recommend, the administration recommends your approval.
And I really appreciate that you had a representative from the insurance company present that day at the committee meeting to really explain what services were being provided. That was very helpful. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Thank you. Name is Raúl Cabaza, and he's been very effective, very efficient, always ready to answer the phone and give us some direction.
Yeah, excellent.
Do we have a motion, item six?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, discussion and possible action on approval of Weaver and Tidwell LLP to proceed with full forensic investigation. We have a...
I believe, that's just the school board item, right?
Yes.
Of formality to approve their services.
Yes.
Okay.
If that's the case, then I move to, that we approve, or that we go ahead and move on.
Yeah, because the agreement's already been, you've approved an agreement.
Written down, they've already started the audit. Yeah, we...
Do we have a motion, item seven?
I so move. I move that we approve the item as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on proposal for construction of three billboard structures.
Attached is the proposal for the construction of three billboards and the cost of materials with light. That would be approximately $7,086. And the maintenance, the department would do the labor on this particular project. The district can place these, will place these structures on district property. The cost of vinyl for each billboard change is about $800. This would be only, the only recurring cost for this particular project. I think that we handed out, we handed out these particular information there to each one of you, so you could see what we have done in the past. The district in 2013, 14, had quite an expense using the provider, and would charge us rent on it per year. And then this past year, that we used them again. And if we put those aside, and since those are recurring costs, we'll have a total savings of about $60,000. These, it's just a initial cost, and then we maintain them. So, this is some sort of a real good opportunity for us to save money, and we really recommend this.
Absolutely. They always say, why rent when you can buy? So, it's ours, and we can use it, and no recurring cost. I'm all for it.
Mr. Where are the billboards going to be placed?
The billboard will be, they'll be at the two high schools. We discussed that with Superintendent Trigo, and there will be one here at the main hub, right by the multipurpose. We will have a total of three, and we will maintain them.
And it'll also be lit?
Everybody will be lit. Everybody have power.
Will they use for like the graduates and all that, the way we do the top 10?
Yes, the way we do top 10. Quite a savings, and it was a great study that the business department ran, Mr. Resio heading the study. And when we put the pencil to it, it's quite a cost for our school district, and that's why we felt comfortable in making this recommendation to the school board for approval.
I just don't know why we found out earlier.
Yes, I don't know.
It's a real good, it's a real good opportunity.
It's going to pay off, it's going to really make a difference.
The administration recommends that you all approve that.
Do we have any more discussion, item eight? Do we have a motion and item eight?
So move, sir.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on propose, proposal to pave Gria Middle School parking lot.
Attached is the proposal, the second proposal of Gria Middle Parking Lot. We had an opportunity to look into it in detail. We had the vendor discuss with us the project. I think La Gruia Middle really needs a pavement. It's pretty much beat. There is no pavement. It is actually a hazard, and I think it deserves a priority. We would respectfully urge this project to go through and recommend that it be approved. I think that it would do a great honor to the city of La Gruia's students and the surrounding area with a project like this.
And I just want to add, this was presented to the facilities where me and Dr. Cantú were present. I know Ms. Ibanez, who is the principal at that school, was present as well, and did provide pictures of the condition of the parking lot as it is today, and I can actually say that is not acceptable, and we need to, you know, correct that. And also, I know she did present to us that hopefully the next project would be the track, and we're looking into that as well.
I would like to mention also that we appreciate, on behalf of the district, thank Mr. Falcone for the prompt proposal and reaction to trying to help the district also, Mr. Jaya Falcone.
Do we know when the project will be completed, our estimate?
As soon as you all approve it, I will contact him tomorrow, and then he will tell us the timeline for that.
Great, if we could get it before school starts, that'd be awesome.
Mr. Resio?
Yes.
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was this, you know, bid out with the vendor, or is it under a certain amount?
He's a bidder, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, so it's already been?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
He's an approved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on budget amendment 2015-08.
Attached is the budget amendment 2015-8. The amendment is being prepared to revise the current budget revision to the expenditures presented for your review and approval. Basically, if you look at page 119, we had additional revenues. And we just expensed it out to the different functions for the month of August, basically and balanced out.
Do we have any discussion, item 10? Do we have a motion, item 10?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 11, consider and take possible action on proposed tax rates that will be published in the notice for the public meeting.
The proposed tax rate to be published in the notice for the public meeting are as follows. The proposed rate for MNO, interest and sinking in total will be, MNO will be 117, and the interest and sinking fund will be 2.2684, which totaled 143.84. And that will be publicized, if you look at your next page, 121. And that's a copy of, am I correct here, lovely? Okay, that should be on the paper by tomorrow, with your approval.
Any more discussion, item 11? Do we have a motion, item 11?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 11, consider, no, item 12, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of July 2015.
Mr. Resio, basically presented is a request for approval for the tax refund for the month, and basically, it's a total of 499.25. We recommend approval.
Any discussion? Have a motion, item 12?
I so move, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible action on declaring surplus items as obsolete for auction in September 2015.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, and ladies and gentlemen. We do have surplus items that the district would like to have declared as obsolete starting on pages, on page 125 through 143. These are from all the different campuses and offices that are, just cannot be used for the district anymore. Once, if they are declared obsolete, the district will enter into a contract with an auctioneer. We're looking at the month of September for that auction, and probably towards, middle towards the latter part of September. So, we can do, we'll have to advertise in our newspaper and do some other advertising.
Any discussion on item 13? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. President. Item 14, consider and take possible action on requisition, 5,000 and over, in a 12-month aggregate. in a 12-month aggregate.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo. We do have requisitions 5,000 over in a 12-month aggregate for you, for your consideration on pages 144 and 145. There's proper funding for these purchases.
Any discussion? We have a motion on item 14. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, consider and take possible action in awarding of the following bids, 1601 office and instructional supplies.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have for your consideration on pages 1, 146 through 149 for office and instructional supplies. Our recommendation is to approve the folded companies for these, for this services. And again, this is providing product for all our campuses and offices.
Do I need to do one at a time, or can I just read, listen, all of them?
Yes, you do, individually.
Do we have a motion on, on item 15, 1601?
I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, 16-02 classroom furniture catalog bid.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've left a handout in front of you for bid number 1602. It's a revised copy, and our recommendation is to approve that revision. Again, the companies that are involved.
Do we have a motion on 16-002?
So move.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, 16-03 office furniture catalog bid.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, there's a handout in, in front of you for bid 1603 for office furniture catalog bid. Our recommendation is to approve the revised copy.
Do we have a motion on 16-03?
So move.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. González. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, dash, item 15, number 16-04, computer and copier paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an annual bid, as well as the other annual, the other three bids previous, previous to this. These bids run from September 1st, 2015, through August 31st, 2016. For the computer and copier paper on bid 1604, our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis based on low bid.
Do we have a motion on 16-04? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, 16-05, student trainers' supplies.
Mr. President, on this bid, we do recommend as well to award the bid on an item-by-item basis based on low bid.
Do we have a, a motion on 16-05? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, 16-06, medical equipment and supplies.
Again, Mr. President, thank you very much. Our recommendation is to award the bid on an item-by-item basis based on low bid, again.
We have a motion, item 15, 16-06. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramírez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ramírez.
Thank you very much.
Item 16, consider and take possible action on request for permission to create an attendance and adjudication administrator position.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Superintendent, everyone in attendance. Item 16, we respectfully ask for this attendance and adjudication administrator. This individual will be at the district level and coordinate, coordinating efforts to improve our, our district's attendance. Respectfully ask for your permission to, to open this position. Staff recommends approval.
Any discussion?
Just a question, how is this different than a tour and officer?
The officer would be at the, under this administrator, this individual here. The administrator would be coordinating efforts with our campuses, departments, and would be working with Mr. Raúl Fopena, who has, does have a detailed plan on, on improving this attendance for the district. He did, I know he met with the superintendent, I happened to be there when he was going over this plan, so this individual would, would obviously work with the officer to get to, to improving our attendance, which the district does have an officer as we speak.
One tour and officer?
Yes, sir. I believe in Mr. Peña's detailed plan, if I'm not mistaken, he had a campus representative. Every campus would have a representative or a contact point, so we could, but that's, that's...
Mr. Peña's back there. You want to present, Mr. Peña, just very briefly as to the plan that you have to address truancy, and of course, we know that, that key is to have our students in school so they can learn, and, and that is our goal to improve, to improve student attendance, and in turn, it will improve overall performance of our district.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo. We have a district task force that we're going to implement, and there'll be campus representation with that committee, and what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and look into, you know, the first week of school, the policies, procedures that the district has, and if the campuses have any other recommendations, we want to come up with a district effort plan, and the administrator will be hope, oversee this and make sure the implementation takes place. The officer will also, in both, will be making home visits for campuses and helping campuses make sure that the students are at school. We've done some research. We've been reading other states and around the state, high schools that are doing very well, secondaries, and with attendance, we've called them up, done some research, and one of the things that really stands out, there's two things. One is that there's home visits being made and providing assistance to families. So I've contacted all the outside agencies also here in the Rio Grande City area, and they're going to join us in that committee, and what we're going to do is, we have a survey form. The officer or person in the campus or district will go to the homes, they're going to do a survey, and identify those needs. Once we know what the needs are, then we'll contact the agencies and have them go to the homes and help out the family. And then at the campus level, we'll have our counselor. Now, the campus committee is going to consist of an assistant principal or a designee, a counselor, a classroom teacher, and an attendance clerk. At secondaries, at both high schools, there is an attendance clerk. So it's very important that we meet, and we're going to be meeting, you know, the first, before school starts, the first three weeks, and then after that, every six weeks, and we'll be monitoring the attendance of every campus throughout the district. So those are the efforts that we have in place. Now, some of the incentives that Mr. Trigo and I have talked about, and we've already visited a dealership, and we have an appointment with another one, some schools throughout in Brownsville says that that has worked for them is offer a vehicle for, to a student, raffle it off for perfect attendance.
Oh, wow.
So we're going out to the dealerships.
It used to be bikes, now it's cars.
If we find some generous dealerships around our area, that would be, that's of course, ideal, the ideal situation. They used to give certificates.
Wow.
Now, if Plan A doesn't work, where a dealership, you know, can do that, we're going to go out and I'll ask permission to go out to some businesses and hopefully have some donors, so we can make that happen.
That's great. I've heard a lot of people say that incentives used to work very well. I know that there's a lot of monies out there that we lose out when kids don't come to school, and I thank you, Mr. Peña, because I know that truancy is only one department under your leadership as an administrator, but it seems like you really took that pull by the horns, and I appreciate it because I know that we're, we're missing out on monies when those kids don't come to school.
Now, another initiative we have going, every week, we're going to award every Friday, first place, second place, third place, district-wide, and on Mondays, the officer, myself, the administrator will be visiting the campus, congratulating the staff, the students, for that, and it'll be on a weekly basis.
I know incentives used to work. I mean, that's one of the easiest ways to do it.
Incentives, yes.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
We've also gone to the mayors, well, to Rio, we scheduled a meeting with the Gruia mayor. We would like to have a proclamation early September from the city, so they can see the joint effort.
Excellent.
Those are some initiatives we have in place.
Thank you so much, Mr. Peña. Thank you.
Great job there, Mr. Peña. We appreciate all you're doing for our district. Any more discussion, item 16? Do we have a motion, item 16?
I so move.
Do we have a, a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Salinas and Mr. Peña. Item 17, consider and take possible action on dual enrollment courses agreement with STC for the fall of 2015.
Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, ladies and gentlemen, this item was presented to the curriculum board committee meeting, and our high schools, all three high schools are requesting dual enrollment courses. Preparatory, preparatory for early college high school is requesting music 1306 and Spanish 2313, and this is based on students' requests when they do their schedules. Early, Rio High School is requesting welding. Rio High School is requesting welding, CNA, and phlebotomy. It is a cost to the district for 22,000 only because we do not have the teachers to teach those courses, but they are offered, Rio High School does offer phlebotomy and some other programs as well. We are requesting approval of these courses.
Do we have any discussion on item 17?
No, I know that I went through the curriculum committee, and Mr. Sainz and I were there when Ms. Garcia presented, and I know that Mr. Sainz answered, and Ms. Garcia answered all my questions, and it seems like it's a great idea.
Fantastic. Anytime, you know, we want to prepare students better for the, you know, their career or college, you know, man, that's fantastic, and so our efforts here are, I think, are well-intentioned, and we ought to do everything possible to get more courses, if possible.
Give them a leg up.
And our students are now being faced with a new graduation plan. It's called the Foundation High School Program that requires students to graduate with an endorsement, and so that leads to a career path. So it's important that we continue offering these type of courses.
The CNA, will that give them a, an actual certificate, or?
Yes, sir. In fact, we have an agreement with STVI. They actually presented certificates before the end of the school year, and we had a lot of students that were passed the exam and got their certificates, so they have an opportunity to be employed in that capacity.
Yeah, and in the area of welding, they also have an opportunity to get certified in that area?
That is correct, sir.
Very good, excellent.
Good money in that area now.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion, item 17?
I move, sir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 18, consider and take possible action on taxing towards STAR for the 2015-2016 school year.
The previous board meeting that we had, we presented a math curriculum program for our elementary students, and so this time around, we needed to look for something for the middle schools. All middle school principals got all their math features together, and they all voted on taxing towards STAR. For all middle schools, it's $26,785.80, and this is funded through Fund 255 and 270, so we are requesting approval for this particular math program.
And again, I know I went through the curriculum committee, and everything was, looked good. I move that we approve this item as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Sainz. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 19, consider and take possible action on AgileMind programs for the 2015-2016 school year.
AgileMind is a software program that is for mathematics, and this is our high school math program. It has been used in the past at Rio High School. It's been very successful. Both high schools agreed. We polled the teachers and the principals, and they would like to see this program again in our campuses. This is 49,000 for Rio High School and 38,000 for Gruia High School. Both pro, both schools, I'm sorry, the funding will be available through Fund 255 and 270 as well. My mistake, high school allotment. We, we are asking approval of this item, and this item was also presented at the committee.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. I know, Mr. Sainz and I asked a lot of questions, and it seems like it's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm familiar with the program too, so, and I know it has produced results, so, yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second by Ms. Solís? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 20, consider and take possible action on request for new courses for high school.
This particular item, we have two courses that we're requesting. We're requesting the AP Macroeconomics for Gruia High School, but they're the ones requesting the course, but we're requesting permission for both high schools to offer this course in the event that Rio High School would like to offer the course in the near future. Macroeconomics is actually the foundation for the economics courses at the university level, so we are requesting permission to offer this course. Jazz is the Jazz Two. We have five students that took advantage of Jazz One, and we would like to continue this program for those individual students. We are requesting permission to approve.
And with Jazz Two, that's a teacher that's already employed by the district, correct?
That is correct, ma'am. Yes. And for the AP Macroeconomics as well.
Just to encourage again, and make this distinction between the early college high schools and the AP and dual enrollment, I've said it before, and I'm, you know, I'd like to repeat it because a lot of people are not understanding some of the differences. Early college high school is basically an effort by the state of Texas to help first-generation students, that means whose parents did not go to college, and, and these students have no one to go to as far as the parents are concerned, because they're not going to college, and so it's a pretty good program, but it's generally based for students, first-generation students. The AP program is, and the dual enrollment, that's for the students that have had opportunities, and they're presented opportunities, and if I, if I had my druthers, I would encourage my own kids to take the AP classes over those three, because those are really the one that are, that have the vigor and, and, you know, that for, to prepare them for college.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. González. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Item 21, consider and take possible action on amendment of TASB policy, local academic achievement class ranking.
Board President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, we're bringing this item back to the board because after discussion and after looking at our accountability, we failed to include dual credit courses, and in our ranking policy, we were going to be at a disadvantage. We allowed students to take dual credit courses and didn't give those dual credit courses weights. So in your packet, you have the old policy and you have the new policy, and if you refer to page, that's the only change we're making, to page seven of eight, the revised policy, we're asking to give dual credit courses in the core area nine points versus no points. That way, we can encourage kids, and you may ask, but why do we want kids to take dual credit courses? Well, in our new accountability system, dual credit courses and dual credit completion is something that the high schools are evaluated in, in the, in the current accountability system that we have, and we feel that if we don't give it any weight, students may say, you know what, I'm not going to take the dual credit, I'm going to take the AP. So we're trying to make that distinction to say, okay, if you're taking an AP course, we're going to give you 12 because we know the rigor is this much, but we're also saying, if you're taking a dual credit course, you're doing college-level work, we need to give you some points versus no points. So we're basically asking just to include that in our policy in that one paragraph to give it nine points. And on that same note, just to let you know in the accountability, I will be reporting at the next board meeting, but we had one campus that got seven out of seven distinctions, and that was Mr. Adolfo Peña, and I don't want the meeting to end without us giving him that recognition, because to get seven out of seven at a secondary is something that's very hard to do. I'm a secondary person, I was a high school person for many years, and to be able to achieve that level of rigor because you're looking at AP, you're looking at dual, you're looking at attendance, you're looking at performance, you're looking at kids scoring, not only passing, but scoring high, and he was able to do all that, and I feel that, you know, we need to recognize that, because those efforts are not easy to attain. So we're basically, on that note, asking for administration to approve the policy and with that revision of the nine points that we failed to include in the previous policy.
And I know that's an issue that some parents have brought up, so I'm glad that we're rectifying the situation so that the weight given for those classes.
And it was an issue that was brought up with the early college kids.
Exactly.
Yeah, they were like, well, we don't want to take dual, we're not going to get any weight, so it'll take care of that issue, and it'll also take care of the issue of, you know, am I dual or am I AP, but I want the points. Well, if you're dual, you'll still get the points. That way, we can get the kids that really belong in AP and the kids that really belong in dual.
Exactly, and I know that Mr. Sainz made a distinction of the ones that belong in one category and some belong in another, and we can publicize that on the website too, so the parents can know that that issue has been resolved.
We had some excellent discussion at the committee meeting. I, I wish we had the benefit of everybody listening to the discussion, because it is very, very well thought out the way you all have done it, and, and it brings out, I think, it's going to bring out the best in students as well. So congratulations for putting it together, and, and I...
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solís. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solís. Item 22, consider and take possible action on student code of conduct handbook for the 2015-2016. for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Trigo, fellow educators, and ladies and gentlemen. There are three things that we'd like to accomplish tonight. The first one is, we'd like to thank the board committee that worked with the student code of conduct, the assistant superintendent, the superintendent, because they did an excellent job in providing guidance, and the input they provided was excellent. Our second objective that we'd like to look at is a decision-making forum that we have provided for you. Every school district in the state of Texas has to adopt a student code of conduct. The eighty-fourth legislative session ended in the end of May, there were approximately eleven thousand bills introduced to the governor, well, to the Texas, the Senate and the House, there were about fifty-five hundred that were passed by both the Senate and the House, and there were four hundred and twenty-two, a little bit plus or minus five, that were signed by the governor. There were some that impacted education, needless to say, and that brings us to our third objective that we'd like to accomplish, and that's just providing you a synopsis of the major changes that are recommended in the student code of conduct for this year. First of all, you should have a student code of conduct with you, and they are reflected in the changes. On the left side, you will see that it says Rio Grande City CISD, Student Code of Conduct, page seven and eight, and basically is that they have, in that specific area, they've incorporated the official definition for e-cigarettes or electronic cigarettes. The bill, Senate Bill Ninety-Seven, becomes effective ten one fifteen, and at that point, what it does, it creates a criminal offense for such products all the way up to the age of twenty-seven. And what that does in the education code, it prohibits, it basically has the effect of prohibiting non-student, non-student adults from using e-cigarette devices at any school-sponsored or school-related activity. The next item that is, that affects our student code of conduct is Senate Bill One Oh Seven, a major bill in this legislative session, and that requires that each campus designate a campus behavior coordinator, and that may be the principal, an assistant principal, or any other campus administrator selected by the principal. What they're trying to do here, and the intent of the legislature was that all over the state of Texas and even in the nation, we are a reflection of our society, and what they're trying to do is come up with a more uniform way of administering discipline. And if you have a campus behavior coordinator who would be the one to make the final decisions per se as to what would happen, you get a more uniform, you get more uniformity and discipline. Also, in Senate Bill One Oh Seven, it establishes the requirements for the timing of notification of parents, which we already have in our student code of conduct, and most school districts already have that. Now it is, however, now it is the law. House Bill Twenty-three Ninety-eight, and you heard Mr. Peña mention to you that it overhauls the complete area of student truancy, it raises the compulsory attendance age to nineteen, and creates a truancy court. You will no longer, truancy is no longer a criminal offense, it is a civil offense. The, the way that they will do that is they will go through, they've amended the, the code of criminal procedures, and at that point, there'll be a, a truancy court that will be established in every county, and Mr. Peña outlined to you more or less what would be done in that area. Senate Bill One Oh Seven also eliminates the authority to expel a student for use or possession of a knife that is not an illegal knife, but is prohibited by the student code of conduct. Prior to this legislative session, anyone who had a knife in their possession could be expelled from school. Now, the difference between an illegal knife and, and a knife is, an illegal knife is defined, one that has five and a half inches or more, the blade, okay? And that in itself is, is illegal, that's a prohibited weapon. On, next item, on Senate Bill Ninety-Seven, defines e-cigarettes, and that is also in our student code of conduct, it has been provided for you. It also changes, Senate Bill One Oh Seven changes, the expulsion reasons. There were three things that were added and one deleted. The items that were added were handgun, firearm silencer, tire deflation device, switchblade knife was deleted. Senate Bill Nine Twenty-three amended the, the area of retaliation that anyone, and that's for any employee or a member of the family or public, that chooses to, or their intent to harm or cause harm or threaten anyone, can be charged with retaliation. House Bill Two Oh Seven added the offense of voyeurism to the list of Title V offenses. Title V offenses are those that are offenses against, in, in a person. Page sixty-two, also, House Bill Two Oh Seven, they add the definition of voyeurism to our student code of conduct.
I want to say that I was, again, in the committee where Mr. Osuna and Ms. Tanguma presented, and I was very impressed with their presentation, the discussion was excellent. They are...
It was over two hours.
Yes, it was long, but, but it was an excellent discussion. That's what I mean about being a part of the committees, because...
That's right.
We discussed just everything, and I know there was a follow-up meeting between you and Mr. Osuna to follow up on some things, but again, you know, these are excellent discussions, and I commend both you, Mr. Osuna, and Ms. Tanguma for the, for the presentation you all made. It was very, very well thought out and presented.
Thank you.
Very good.
And I know Mr. Seines had a lot of very, very good questions. I guess, being an administrator, he really pointed out some very key issues that myself as a criminal attorney had missed, so I'm very impressed with his discussion too.
Very.
Do we have a motion, item twenty-two?
I so move.
Thank you.
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Solis. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Osuna. Anything on reports?
If you, you show these hours, or we can go over them, or not?
Yeah. If you are, it's fine. The only thing I do want to say is that, you know, I see a lot of administrators here today, is that, you know, the presentation that was done before the board meeting, we enjoy them and we encourage them. If, if you have any students or faculty that want to be recognized at the board meeting, just, you know, make sure you coordinate it with Mr. Trigo's office, with Sandra or Becky, and we can have you recognized at our board meetings. And that being said, section seven, we're now under, under closed, seven twenty-seven, we're in a closed session under the authority of the Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one.
Mr. Klein? It is, it is now eight fifty-two, we're out of executive session. Do we have a motion on item A?
I move that we approve the item as presented.
Do we have a second on item A?
I second.
We have a second by Mr. Klein. All in favor say aye.
Aye.